Okay, welcome to this meeting of the Amherst Planning Board's Zoning Subcommittee. As I announce at the beginning of every meeting, all open public meetings in Massachusetts are subject to recording and this meeting is in fact being recorded by ACTV for future rebroadcast on Amherst Media. We're going to start off tonight, we've got Mike Olken here from the town's IT department. Mike's the GIS expert on mapping, computerized mapping, and he's here to talk to us about the conversion of the official zoning map from paper to GIS. We've been talking about that on and off over the course of the summer and we scheduled, about a month or so ago, we scheduled a time for Mike to come in and tell us about the work that he's been doing and give us a progress update. So, I will turn it over to you, Mike. Thank you for coming in. It should be, oh, it's not plugged in. I can tell by the fact that it doesn't have a wire coming out of the back. Excuse me for just one second.
All right. You can have a turn, Mike.
Okay. So, I know you're busy at full time, so I appreciate you giving the time to get up here and explain what you're doing. What I have here are the official zoning maps. And it's really the last, really the last frontier in terms of digitizing our maps. We've digitized our tax maps, utility maps. We've actually had two base maps done now in the last couple decades. And yet, the official zoning map, if you want to refer to some of the finer details on it, it's still just on paper. So, I just want to go through what kind of maps we've gone through to-
To modernize that and turn it into a digital product. And hopefully, this is something that can be brought forward in the near future to town meeting, correct?
Excuse me. Would it help if people from the zoning subcommittee sat in the audience so they could see that-
Yeah, you may want to, so my presentation's up here. This screen's not working right now, so I'm going to be directing your attention up here. You may want to-
Sure. Follow along on the-
Well, do you have handouts?
Yeah, you can follow along. Those handouts are exactly the same as I'm showing on the screen for the, more or less. So, here's the official zoning map. This is what I have sitting next to me here. There's the map key that you see on page two. And here's an example of what it looks like. So, we have all the zones on there. I do want to point out, we actually have some zones on there that don't exist. There's a wetlands district that no longer exists, but it still shows up on here. I do want to point out what the source of the official zoning maps goes back to. So, the base map was from 1956. There was a townwide flight, aerial photography was collected in 1956. Base map was created with streets, streams, and the tax parcel map was plotted on this base, and the zoning map was plotted on this base. And to this day, that's what the official zoning map resides on. The tax maps, tax property lines were updated actively on these maps once a year, right until the 90s. And since then, our tax parcel maps have become a digital product. So, already, we have a disconnect. If you're in a subdivision that's newer than the 1990s, there's a lot of guesswork when it comes to some of the finer details on this map. The unofficial zoning map is something we've had as a set of layers in the town's geographic information system for over a decade. For the last six years, we've, five years, we've had this available on our website. You can make custom maps and incorporate the zoning into it. You can figure out zoning for properties. And it's, it's been quite useful. And this is the direction that we've been moving in with, with all of our map resources. So, here's an example with the aerial photography under it. So, electronic zoning maps are quite beneficial. You know, any questions that you have for staff can often be resolved looking at the same information as staff has access to when you have an electronic zoning map, especially one that is accessible on the web as we have. They're usually pretty simple to create because zone boundaries typically follow property lines, or they're based on distance-based setbacks from roadways, which in a geographic information system, we can automatically calculate at high accuracy. They often follow road centerlines or identifiable physical features that are easy to find on the ground. Of course, we've got one hitch here in Amherst. We have one zone that's really kept us from being able to make a completely digital official zoning map, and that's been the flood-prone conservancy district. We haven't been able to accurately map that until now. And I want to take you through some of the background on it, and I want to take you through briefly the process we went through to get the FPC into a digital format at what we believe to be the highest accuracy possible, considering the constraints it has. So, the FPC is based primarily upon elevations. The map I'm showing here is part of the official zoning map near Puffers Pond. And you can see, along the FPC boundary, we've got this figure of 240 MSL. That means 240 feet above mean sea level. And as you go downstream along major rivers in Amherst, wherever the FPC is, you'll find these elevation markings periodically, and they'll change as you go downstream. So, the FPC boundaries are based on these. That's been the most problematic. They're also based on property lines in some places. You can see here, there's a transition which crosses a street, goes along the road right away here. That's a property line. There are also streams with designated FPC setback areas, and I'm going to go over what those look like and what the issues are with those in a few minutes. So, it's been a real challenge to map to elevation contours. In fact, it always is. If you take a historic map, which our zoning, our official zoning map essentially is, it's from the 50s, and you want to plot something that's based on elevation, it's really not as simple as just tracing the elevation contour. What we had for a base map in the 50s in terms of elevation was much more general than what we have now. What we have now is a highly detailed map, and what we find in a lot of areas is, an elevation line is actually in a slightly different alignment than what was thought. And we really actually have not had a detailed enough terrain model until we did this past base map in 2009. We used technology called LiDAR, which uses laser beams to get millions and millions of elevation points on the surface of the earth. And we got an extremely detailed terrain model that we were finally able to use to accurately map elevations for the FPC. So, there were four steps we went through to, to what we call our modernization of our FPC boundary and of our zoning map. We scanned and we overlaid all of this whole set of official zoning maps. We scanned those in our scanner. We overlaid them on our existing map. They matched up quite well, for the most part, and we used this for reference purposes. We mapped all the locations where there's an elevation noted for the FPC boundary. So, we just put points on the map and recorded the elevation. We converted our elevation model, or our elevation contours from 2009 into the same vertical datum that they used back in the 50s. I'm not really going to go into a great detail here, but basically, the model of the earth that was used to derive elevations was revised in the late 80s. And throughout the US, there are variations in what a certain distance above mean sea level actually is. In Amherst, it's, it's a difference of about 13 centimeters in most places. But what that means is, that changes the alignment of the topography very slightly, but enough for it to make a difference. So, we wanted to accurately represent what the elevation was on these maps while being true to what the elevation is in the real world. And then finally, we remapped the FPC to follow the elevation contours as designated on the official zoning maps. Property boundaries were necessary. In one area, we had to trace the FPC boundary because it didn't follow any, any discernible boundary, elevation, or property line, or anything. That was just along Lawrence Swamp. And then we had various river and stream distance setbacks that we recorded on the map as well. The result is, we get to where we've wanted to be for over a decade now, and that's a completely electronic zoning map. In the background of this image, we have the official zoning map scan. All the black and white stuff is the scan. Notice, we've got noted the elevations. They all appear to be 310 feet or 320 feet. And we've, we've got the FPC zone. We've got, I'm showing in this image, just one area where there's a stream with a 25-foot Which brings me to the setbacks. And this has been probably the most difficult part of the whole process. Until now, we haven't actually had these at all in the geographic information system. If you wanted to, if you were a property owner and you wanted to know, is there a stream with a 25 or a 50-foot or a 75-foot FPC area around it? The only way to find out is to call Town Hall or to come in and take a look at these maps. Because these streams were noted on these official zoning maps with squares for 25-foot setbacks, triangles for a 50-foot setback, and circles for a 75-foot setback. The only area that has a 75-foot setback is an area along the Mill River in North Amherst. And we've always maintained that as just a regular part of the regular FPC. So, what this means is, the FPC is, it's kind of like having two zones. There's one where you have the core FPC based primarily on these elevations, and then you have the stream setbacks, which is this web of streams all over town. There are great variations between the alignments of a lot of these streams from the 1956 base map and the 2009 base map. It's clear that a lot of these streams were sketched in, they're approximate. There are disclaimers on those maps, too, stating that, that these maps aren't for conveyance purposes. Here's an example of, here, we're looking at an area along Northeast Street here on the scanned official zoning map. And I'm looking now at what we have from the 2009 base map. And now, I'm just going to put the two together. And I think on your handout, this is what we're showing, is the two together. So, you can see, the, it's easy to tell which streams were meant, but it's obvious as well that in some places, they're 50, even 100 feet off, which makes a big difference. And, you know, we've, we've done our best to be complete and accurate with these. This is one feature of the map that definitely needs review, but we feel that it's pretty complete. So, just to conclude before I give a brief demo, do I have a couple minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just to conclude before I give a brief demo, you know, we're at a point now where accurately and completely mapping the FPC electronically is really our final technical step in creating a digital zoning map. And finally, being able to really free ourselves from, from only having a paper reference. It's really, we're putting it to you to look at this, consider this, and I think it's under consideration for fall town meeting to make some slight changes in the zoning bylaw. This is not rezoning. This is really the intended purpose of-
Sorry. Let me turn this off.
You know, the intended purpose of mapping with zoning is, you should really be using the best available base map, and we haven't been able to do that. Now, we feel we're at a point where we can do that, and we should. So, if you go onto the Amherst MA website, and you go to the GIS portion of the site, which you'll always see the link on the left side to Maps and Property Info right here. Go in there, and we have now a viewer that allows you to take a look at the draft zoning and FPC map. And I'm going to give a brief tour of that. So, I'm at amherstma.gov. I went to Maps and Property Info, and here we are. And I've got our draft zoning and FPC map here. And here it is townwide. Let's, let's take a look at some area in town. So, let's, and let me just take you through this map. So, I'm going to turn off all the stuff in front. All right, so what we're looking at are, right now, I've just stripped it down to the official zoning map with the street names on over it, so we have a little reference here.
Excuse me.
Yep.
May I just point out that there are wetlands lines shown on there-
Yes.
-from the old wetland zone, as well as the FPC lines.
Oh, that's right.
So, the FPC lines are those sort of slanted dashes.
Right. Let's get in a little closer here. All right, so this, yeah, the, this boundary here, I believe, would be the-
Vestigial wetlands.
That was, yeah, okay. So, that's the wetlands boundary, and the double line boundary are zoning boundaries. So, here's a zoning district boundary. The wetlands boundary are these dashed lines. This is kind of a confusing spot because we have this wetland zone, and we also have the 25-foot setback streams here that happen to be going through wetlands.
Mike, so that map doesn't actually show a line for the 25-foot setback? Is that right? It just shows the stream with the squares, and that means there's an implied 25-foot setback from there?
That's correct, yeah. So, what we're looking at right now is strictly the official zoning map. Now, I'm going to turn on our electronic layers over it. So, you can see, this purple line here is the actual stream alignment from our 2009 base map. The 2009 base map, you know, modern photogrammetric techniques were used to derive it. Streams, pavement edges, building footprints, all those things are accurate to within a foot. So, we trust them. If we look at the FPC zone itself, you can see there's some variations. This double line here is what they have on the official zoning map, and that's meant to represent a certain elevation. And that certain elevation happens to go pretty close, but not, it's not following it completely. There are areas where we find that they follow very, very closely and, and very well. And then there are other areas where the actual elevation that was intended to be used in the area veers off and goes other places.
Excuse me. May I just comment on the fact that the double line is actually the FPC zone and the wetland zone lines that are next to one another? So, that diagonal dash is actually more representative of what the FPC zone is, as shown on the old maps throughout town.
The one he's pointing to now?
Right.
That's what he's showing now, yes.
Yeah, so this is-
So, it's really not a double line, it's really that diagonal dash.
Oh, okay. That's right. Yeah, so that's the zoning boundary for the FPC. And then, on our modern map, we're using this 320-foot line, which the boundary follows. And you can see, 320 feet actually takes this little jog off here before it comes back, goes along it. And we find these variations, you know, really throughout town. It's really a matter of, in flat areas, you'll find great variations. In very steep areas, there's not going to be much of a variation. They're going to line up very well. But the way the FPC bylaw is written, it's very clear, and the way it's, the way it's laid out on the map, it's very clear. The definition of the FPC is based on these elevations unless they're following something else, obviously, like a property line, so forth.
Mike, have you or are you able to do an overall calculation in terms of the amount of area that's covered by FPC as you've drawn it here versus the amount of area that was covered by what was drawn on the official paper map previously?
No, we haven't done that. We haven't done that. I, you know, best guess is it'd come out roughly even, you know. Probably not a huge net gain or loss either way. There are areas, as, as we look around, there are areas where the FPC goes out, you know, is larger than we thought, and then there are areas where it's smaller than we thought. And it's, there's no real trend. We probably could produce that. We'd probably need a little time to trace the boundaries from the official zoning map. But that calculation could be performed. Jonathan?
If I may, in practice, there is not supposed to be any difference. Because what the current language of the bylaw does is say that on a specific property, if you want to develop a specific property, you would have to survey that property and identify where those elevation lines are accurately on the ground. So, those accurate on the ground ones would correspond to what's shown on the GIS as opposed to what's shown on the old paper map. So, in practice, there's practically no change whatsoever, and that's the intent, that this, that we're just creating an accurate representation of the original intention of the FPC so that it can be adopted as part of a digital official zoning map without making any changes to the zoning boundaries. Later changes to the FPC based on study and so forth might well be forthcoming, but right now, the intent is to just accurately represent what the original intention was.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
And that is that there are parcels in town where the FPC zone is not related to either a property line or an elevation, and the way they are shown on the official zoning map is the way they are maintained in this version that is going to be the electronic version. For instance, the Meadow Street properties, where those lines don't correspond to either property lines or elevations, those are shown exactly the way they're shown on the official zoning map.
So, those are equivalent to, Mike, what you said earlier, where you just traced the lines, basically?
Right. We did have a few instances like that where, in most cases, it was very clear, oh, this is a, this is a property line. But there were cases like that on Meadow Street where it's, it's not at all apparent, and there, there was really no available documentation to suggest there was anything other than what's drawn on the map.
It's pretty clear, as you've showed, that the locations of the rivers and streams have either changed or been not all that accurately mapped in the first place. And so, you've obviously gone through and tried to pick the corresponding feature that's on the ground today to what was on the original 50-year-old paper map. Were there any instances where you weren't able to figure out what was being referred to by the line on the map?
Yes.
So-
Sure. If we, if we go, and, you know, a lot of these were in areas that are protected areas already. Here I am, south of Bay Road, up on the, up on the Holy Oak Range, and there are some big differences here. And it's, you know, it's a mountainous terrain, it's, now, this may not be the best one, but you can see, these are quite a bit different in their alignment. It's not surprising. It's, it's a mountainous terrain, heavily forested. It was heavily forested back then. And the fact is, from the 1956 base map, the plane was higher up in the air. They weren't getting quarter-foot resolution photography at that time. So, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, the streams were sketched in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Only based on that, but not necessarily based on, you know, the strictest photogrammetric methods.
Sure. So, I guess my question is mostly, was there anything substantive that is on the paper today, but that doesn't look like there's any corresponding feature on the ground now that you were able to locate?
There are a few minor ones. I'd say the, you know, the biggest one, and we might as well take a look at this right One that's been noticed for years has been this area here. We're looking at, this is Potwine Lane right here. And the FPC in this area follows the 170-foot topo line, and that line, if we're getting close enough, it should show up. That line actually goes way up here and eventually comes back down and meets this, although that's not shown at all on the official zoning maps. What is shown on the official zoning maps are some references to what looked like property lines there in a vastly different alignment. This whole area back here was not shown as FPC at all. And so, what we've done in this case, and we've noted it, is followed this property line, then the 170-foot, another 170-foot elevation line comes back down, and that's been what's being used. So, we do have, you know, half a dozen or so areas similar to this. This is probably the most egregious one, where it's just, based on the elevation, it would be vastly different, in effect, a much larger area if we strictly followed the elevations, as opposed to going about 50-foot along a property line and linking back up with that same elevation.
But, may I say, this is a case where the FPC actually gets larger. So, along the, the stream, the Cushman Brook, it looked like it was getting smaller, but this is a case where there's actually been FPC zone apparently added based on following that 170 contour.
Right. Yeah, the line goes right here on the official zoning map. And really, what I think this is, this is just a case of having a more, more detailed terrain model. With a less detailed terrain model, the 170-foot line goes down here. With a more detailed one, we pick up this small ridge here where that 170-foot line doesn't neatly come down to the road in transition. And I believe there's a transition point south of here where it transitions to 160 feet, maybe further down. But anyway-
It's for the fact that the transition to 160 is the cause of the oddness there because it's following the property line, trying to make the, a 10-foot drop in elevation as, as a way of trying to follow the stream as it's going downhill, even though it's flooding. And that's what that line is across the top.
It's actually going downhill to the north.
Right.
So, that's why there's that line that goes right along the property line where Mike's arrow is now.
Right, oh, that's right. Yeah, so there's a, yeah. Well, here's the transition, actually.
Yes.
It's upstream. Yeah. And, and that transition's there, this one at least is there on the official zoning map. You know, if, transition uses the property line. We saw this throughout town in a lot of areas where you'll have the FPC going right along stream, and then it just zips out away along a property line conveniently, and then it follows another elevation contour. So, we've, you know, we haven't, we've just done everything we can to stick to the letter of the law, but, you know, in cases like this, it's a little different.
This will be a very good part of the argument for subsequently amending the FPC district when we get, when we get the study data.
But anyway, we've, I've posted this online, really, so that we can get as much, you know, as many eyes on this as possible. I think it's important that, you know, if there are errors, that we catch them. And also, in the spirit of transparency, to get this out there, that we've put a lot of thought and a lot of hours into this process. Definitely not trying to rezone. We're trying to just faithfully reproduce what the zoning maps are supposed to be telling us.
I've got one more question with how the stream, the setbacks from the streams are displayed there. So, if I'm interpreting this correctly, you are showing, like in that example, the purple where your mouse is now, is it, is that a stream or is that another boundary?
That is a stream.
Okay. So, so with the stream setbacks, just like the old map, you're not actually showing the, the distance, the setback from the stream, you're just showing- showing the, the distance, the setback from the stream. You're just showing the stream itself?
Correct.
Is that correct? And so my question is, is that, is that done on purpose, or, or why not actually show a 50-foot wide corridor along the stream shaded in as, you know, so that that actually appears to be part of the FPC rather than just showing the stream and
Right.
having people need to figure out what the 25-foot setback is?
I think once we're at the point that we've, we've, th, this is the newest part of this, of, of the process.
Okay.
You know, we recently completed getting the streams coded, and once, once we're really confident that we got it right.
Okay.
Well, that's a pretty easy thing to do, to create what we call a buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially an automated process where we tell the system to draw this, this boundary around the streams at an exact distance, 25 or 50 feet. And at that point, I think it's, that's a good idea. We're going to be incorporating that into the core FPC so that it's really just showing up as one zone.
Right. Because from the regulatory perspective, it all is one zone, even though it's composed of pieces that are defined differently. The regulations are all the same.
Correct.
Even if the, it may be that one of the reasons that the symbols were used originally is that the language in the bylaw reads, for any of those setbacks, all land within a minimum, whatever the number is, of feet horizontally of the crest of the bank for whatever the stream is. And the crest of the bank is not always covered by that line. It may
That's correct. That's, that's a good point.
And so forth. So the symbol is meant to say, here you have to go look for the crest of the bank and then go out 50 feet, rather than having us identify it unless the GIS would get to that level.
That's, that sounds like a good argument to, to continue showing the stream itself because we did, I mean, some of these streams are very small, and the other thing is, anytime you do any base mapping, it's going to be based on the ground conditions at that point in time. It's a snapshot in time. So if we have a wet spring, the streams are going to be slightly wider.
So, so I guess I would just argue as a user, looking at that map, if I was looking at the lower central portion of that map, trying to figure out if I was in FPC, I would not assume that I was in FPC. It looks to me like FPC covers sort of the left part of the map, and there's a purple line that goes down into the lower center part of the map, but there's no actual indication that FPC was down there. So if you did, if you did what you're describing with the buffers and took that out 25 feet, it, it would all, I assume the purple line represents more or less the center line of the stream. So anything within 25 feet of the center line is guaranteed to be in FPC. It might actually go a bit beyond that based on where the crest of the bank is, but anything that's within 25 or 50 or whatever, however many feet of that line on the map, is definitely going to be in the FPC?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if, if there's not a buffer on them, and somebody comes in, how would they know on that purple line if they were 25, or 50, or 75?
We need to make sure that they're So, yeah, the question was, how would someone know if a purple line was a 25, 50, or 75? And we're, my answer to that is, we, we just need to be good about being clear in the legend of the map.
Is it color-coded? Or is it all purple?
Right. At this point, yeah. I mean, right now, it's a draft. We're color-coding for now.
Chris?
Well, Mike does have both of these in the legend. You can see there's a purple 25-foot setback and a sort of a brownish 50-foot setback in the legend. So you just need to know to look in the electronic legend to tell, you know, what kind of stream it is.
Any other questions or comments?
That looks terrific, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm sure that represents a tremendous amount of effort to, to get all that into the system and trace the contours and figure out what a 50-year-old piece of paper is trying to say.
It's an interesting project. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Okay. So, and, and sorry, Mike, just before you go, you, you mentioned earlier, and it has been our intention to have this on the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and is that a realistic per, schedule from your perspective at this point in terms of sort of finalizing the issues with the streams and doing whatever remaining cleanup work is out there? You think that's a achievable target?
I, I would think so. You know, and the, the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, nothing's perfect. You know, even the official zoning map at times has had errors. So that's, that's the good thing. There's flexibility here. You know, it's really more about accepting, moving toward the electronic version and understanding that, you know, if there are errors, just as always, we'll correct them.
And they're much easier to find and correct, and, uh,
Right. But yeah, I think it's, it's an achievable goal, and it's, it's worth moving forward on.
Chris?
You're scheduled to have a public hearing on this article on the 21st of September. So I've asked Mike if he would be able to be available to give this kind of a presentation at that time. Would that be useful, do you think?
It definitely would, yeah.
All right.
Thanks again, Mike.
Thanks.
We don't need this anymore, do we?
We do not. All right. Onward to village center planning projects. We have on our desks, and I believe there's copies in the back of the room, the latest draft from the Cecil Group. I think we've received two revisions to this since our last meeting. Is that right?
Yes. You'll note that in this version, the bulk of the form-based changes occupy the first half of the document, and then the changes to existing sections of the bylaw proceed in the second half of the document. I would note that the Cecil Group is intending to make a, a public presentation. As, as you know, the planning board meeting this evening, the intent of that is really to sort of introduce this. It's not a public hearing. It's, the intent is to, to describe this first sort of coherent attempt to put all of the changes in one document that have been contemplated. There were, in previous iterations, there were pieces that were not included. There were, things were organized in different ways. This is what we hope to have as the first coherent entire document so that people from this point forward can start making clear evaluations of it on their own. The board can, everyone else can, and public comments can be made based on a shared platform of information, rather than, I think, a lot of people have been frustrated by the fact that, that we have all of these moving amendments all the time, but that's always been part of the process. But it is frustrating for people who are trying to say, yeah, but what are you planning to do? Well, this is, this is the first entire coherent statement of the first summary of that intent, and then if it needs to be changed, we take it from there.
And I'll point out, and, and thank you for the fact that this is available on the website as well. I noticed it's on the zoning subcommittee's page on the town website. So this 100 or so-page document that we have is broken up into smaller PDFs. So if you're watching at home, check it out on the town website. It's all available online. Any comments on the latest draft or questions? Bruce?
I, I found some things that you mentioned, but I didn't know if this would be the right time to do it, or what is our timetable?
Anytime.
Anytime?
Sure.
Okay. I, I wondered about some of the speed limits that they suggest on the various street types. And I wondered, is this some sort of a typical formula for these types of streets, or is this, they're suggestions? Is there any possibility of altering them? I'm looking at the commercial civic street type.
They're, they're talking about there a design speed. That is to say, the speed for which, if you designed the road and built it in this way, that is a speed that could be accommodated. That's not to say in any sense that that's the speed limit that would be there. The speed limit would be determined by the select board for any public way. And it would be highly unlikely that going through the middle of a village center, commercial civic street, that you'd have a 40 mile an hour.
That's what I was thinking. It seemed, a lot of these seem just a little too high. The next one, the commercial street type, is 45 miles per hour, and I thought that certainly would seem like it should be 35.
That's a good question. But again, the intent is that, that expresses what the road is designed to accommodate, not what the town would allow.
Okay.
Sure. Go ahead.
Along, along with that, within these pages with the street types, with the di, the diagrams, when they talk about utilities, most of these say overhead, but in their overall statement, they said wherever possible, the utilities should be underground. So I wasn't sure that they had changed their perception of it, or this is just, again, a, a suggestion or how that plays out?
That would be something that they can probably answer this, this evening. I would imagine that you'd be dealing with both overhead streetlights, for instance, utilities, and underground utilities, power lines, telephone lines, cable, fiber optic, and so forth, so that you're, you're talking about both kinds. And I think what they mean is try and, to the extent possible, have things underground.
That's what I was thinking.
Particularly the, the transmission portions of it.
Did you have more, Bruce?
Well, I, I didn't want to, does anybody else have things they want to talk about?
I don't, but
Should I go ahead, or? Okay. Do you, do you want to hear just little picky things about the, the grammar, and, or is that the right time? Just a couple?
Sure.
Okay. On page 18, under 16408, in the center, it says, where pitched roofs are used, a six-inch, 12-inch pitch or greater is encouraged. Do they mean six feet 12 inches? Or six inches slash 12 inches?
Six inch 12-inch pitch.
Six inch 12? Okay.
You're going, you're going, which is it, Sarah? Six inches laterally for, for 12 inches vertically?
Okay. So it's like a panel size?
It's a, yeah, it's, it's an angle that they're describing.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. Then I, I thought the last sentence in that paragraph was awkwardly phrased. Where the, where headhouse structures are necessary, they shall not exceed eight feet in height, be set back from the exterior walls by at least 10 feet. Does that mean they shall not be set back from the exterior walls by at least 10 feet?
Shall be.
Shall be.
They shall be.
It's missing.
Then maybe put that first, then do the shall-nots, which would be the eight feet, and not exceed 20% of the roof area. I think they just make it a little more clear. On page 21, they, they show a, a little sketch here of a building at a corner, and it looks like there are parking places in front, but I thought the
Which, which one are you, you're talking about the rendering that's above?
Yes.
I think they're talking in, in those instances principally about situations where you have existing buildings.
Okay.
And how to deal with corners in, in those instances.
Okay. Because I, I thought that the parking was always to be in the side or the back, so I wasn't sure why this diagram showed it in the front. Okay. For existing buildings.
Chris?
I think Bruce is actually right, that they are intending this to be a proposed building, and so that's a legitimate question as to whether the parking should be there or should be in back.
I, I believe that rendering was developed in response to a specific existing building, but you're right, there's nothing that says that, that that, there's a distinction there between new or renovated or whatever, altered.
Then on page 20, just going back one page, just, there's one word missing from 16411, the third sentence down, oh, no, second sentence, excuse me, should be, shall be maintained.
Yes.
And then page 31, just under 1671, one, two, three, four, five sentences down, or four sentences down, these parking requirements, it should be plural, I believe, supersede the requirements of Article 7?
Yes.
And, and number four at the bottom of the page, I think it should be expanded building areas, plural.
It could be either, actually.
Okay.
Area is a expandable and reducible concept.
Okay. Then on page 32, I, I had a question. It's the, the top paragraph says, parking space requirements for additional residential dwelling units should be one parking space per bedroom for one or two-bedroom units. But then under the chart, under accessory dwelling or live-work unit, it says 1.5 spaces, and attached multifamily, it's two spaces per dwelling.
Well, that's excess. Those are three different things. One and two-bedroom units, and the kinds of uses that would have them are one thing. Accessory dwelling units of any kind, whether the live-work or something else, or another kind of unit entirely, you have, that means you have an existing principal residential use, and you're adding an accessory use, so that the two would have two different parking requirements. A single-family attached or multifamily dwelling is yet a third, or fourth. I forgot at this point, kind of residential use in terms of how it's arranged, and how many units are principal uses and adjacent to each other.
Okay.
So each, each one is different.
Okay. I think that was it. Yeah, that's it for now.
Rob?
Okay. On page 35. Number three, at the bottom, it refers to FC, BD districts, but we want, we want to take out the VC.
I'm sorry?
Under previous parking materials, this is an artifact of, of the previous
You're right. Thank you. That's the wrong acronym.
And at the page 36.
Only in zoning would you have the wrong acronym. I'm sorry, page 30?
Page 36, I have a question. It says, public and private parking structures may be permitted by special permit from the planning board. But the u, the use chart suggests that public parking structures can be SPR, and private are SP. So is that, is this contradicting that? I guess we can ask, well, I guess we, we need to know ourselves what that means.
I think, or I would assume, that the, the first sentence, which would be an odd way of doing it, is referring to special, you know, alternative compliance, alternatives of
Oh, okay.
Permitting under the administrative section. But that could certainly be more clearly stated. It's very confusing as, as a present.
On page 39, number nine, it should be entrances and exits, I assume?
And exists, very existential. Yes.
For the an attachment B, page four.
Did you say D?
B. Or rather, yeah, page, the second page four.
Yeah.
Village for residents over a district. There's an artifact there, RNF, should be RBF.
Yes. You're right.
Attachment D. Page five. No. No, I'm sorry, not, the chart, the chart, page five, that page of the, of the use chart. Live-work units. This is an addition, additional use, which is interesting. I guess I, I can ask the Cecil Group what the distinction between a live-work unit is from, from I guess I can ask the CECL group what the distinction between a live-work unit is from other use types. But in any case, I assume we would want to put in ends and SPRs and stuff along for the other zones, I mean...
Right, it only has SP.
Right.
Yes.
I think, I think, you know, this is an interesting concept that we probably want to make available in existing zones, but that's probably beyond the scope of what we're doing right now, but it is something that I'd like to look at. But in the meantime, I guess we would put ends or something in there, right?
Yeah, I think the definition of the term, of the use category, is in the new language in the definitions section, page one oh five of that one.
But how is it exactly different from three-point-three-two-five? And, and then article, section of zoning bylaw, five-point-zero-one-three, which is accessory use, accessory building use?
I think this is a new principal use.
Oh, it's a new principal use, okay.
Rob, could I follow up on that one while we're on that one? So I had some questions or thoughts about that as well. So it did appear to me to be a new principal use also, and so if we do what I think Rob was implying, which was put ends in all the other zoning districts, to me, that raises the question of what would happen for that use going on today? If someone were doing something that is more or less equivalent to live-work, we don't have a separate use category for that, and so which use category would that be shoehorned into now? And would we be taking that away by putting ends in the other zoning districts for that?
One way or another, it would be grandfathered, if it was legally operating.
Chris?
I think it would be under an accessory use, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it either be the office and...
One of them would be.
Office and studio, or home occupation. And the office and studio is by right, the home occupation requires a special permit from the zoning board. So this should all be coordinated, all of these things should be coordinated among each other.
Those are both accessory uses that you cited?
Those are both accessory uses, yeah. So an office or studio can be for an architect, or engineer, or artist, or a piano teacher, or somebody like that, who has a by-right use in his home, but a home occupation would be somebody who does repair of lawnmowers, or, you know, sharpening tools, or something that's making noise and potentially bothering people, and that would require a special permit. But that would also be an accessory use in someone's home, so this would be similar to that.
So I guess my question remains, though, so if I wanted to start, if I lived in RVC, let's say, where something like that would probably be allowed, and I wanted to start a lawnmower repair business today, I could probably do that through the accessory use provisions that you are citing. If we were to create a new principal use, chances are, I would say, that that would fall under the principal live-work unit use, and if that had an N in the RVC district, then I would imagine that I wouldn't be allowed to do that. And so you're sort of restricting, in other zoning districts, you would end up restricting what people are allowed to do because of the existence of this new principal use with an N and other?
You would be restricting potential uses, you would not be restricting existing uses.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm talking about the, something that doesn't exist today.
Right. It would not be available, and you'd need to have that conversation. For instance, a live-work unit implies that the two are essentially co-joined principal uses, and if the lawnmower repair business, for instance, has enough, you know, motor testing going on and so forth, there might well be some question about whether or not that ought to be by special permit, for instance, in the RVC district. Right now, the RVC district allows up-down uses where you have an office use on the first floor, but the presumption there is not that you're involved in trades with machinery, and noise, and smoke, and so forth. And that's why it's a special permit to do it as an accessory use in that district or anywhere else. You're not preventing, people can still do it through special permit, but they couldn't do it through this mechanism unless we make that allowance.
Chris?
So I think what you're saying is that if you put no in front of all these live-work units in every other zone, you might be precluding the ability of somebody to get a special permit to have a home occupation. Is that what you're saying?
I was concerned about that possibility. I'm not sure if that interpretation is correct, but that's what...
It would be a conflict within the bylaw.
I think it would depend on, it would be a judgment call the zoning enforcement officer would have to make about whether or not what was being proposed was two principal uses blended as a single use, or a principal use with a side thing that was accessory to that principal use.
Right.
And so both paths would be available.
Okay, so we might just want to think about that one, and think about how the definitions of this interact with the definitions of those accessory uses, and make sure that there aren't any contradictions there.
Right.
Sorry, I hijacked your thread there, Rob.
No, that's a good, I wanted to have that conversation anyway, so thank you for bringing that. It might be that, that we shouldn't add this now, but we should bring another article that fully lays out.
That would have maybe yeses in other districts also.
Exactly, right, yeah, so we don't, but, you know, one way or another, I think I'd like to have that use in there at some point. Attachment F, which is dimensional regulations. I think the, for the table, maximum lot coverage for NAVC and AC probably should have, should have footnote O notated on it, because it's ninety-five for some uses, but not, it looks like it should be ninety percent for other uses. Is that right? If you look down on the, on the proposed footnote O, it looks like some lots are requiring ten percent, some lot types require ten percent open space. And so that would mean that ninety-five is sort of asterisk in the table.
Or you could do as is done under BLCOM, where you have a slash, where you have two adjacent, ninety-five with a superscript A, eighty, or whatever it is with a superscript O.
Attachment H, which is the definitions. For proposed definition twelve-point-twenty-seven, effective parking, the amount of parking required for mixed use after adjustment by the shared parking factor. The shared parking factor relates to that chart that's in the proposed section sixteen, but it's not necessarily, at least now, applicable to mixed-use parking in districts that don't, that aren't form-based, right? So I just wonder if the, if that definition should be clarified a little bit, that the shared parking factor relates to form-based zones.
And you could simply say, under section sixteen point, boom, 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 and that would, that would make it applicable only to the form-based.
Okay. And there's one definition that I would like to see in here that is not here, streetyard.
What is that?
Streetyard. I like, I like that term, but it's not in here.
Yeah. I'm surprised that that wasn't...
I think it's, I think it's equivalent to frontage, which has been added. But streetyard is used in several places, and people might want to at least be referred back to that definition. And so I have a couple more questions, sorry. This is about the proposed change to the zoning map in Atkins Corners. What is the practical, I guess this is a question for the planning staff, what is the practical effect of rezoning from RO with PURD overlay to RVC with regard to open space requirements?
We don't have a measured figure for that yet. That was something we had asked the Hampshire Village folks to do in their own interest, but we can say that it reduces that requirement, so that even whether or not they come into full compliance, they will be more conforming than they are now.
Could you explain that more? I didn't quite get it.
As a consequence of the bylaws changing over the period of the life of the plan unit residential development, and the subsequent division and sale of property between entities, there are some entities that have a fair amount of open space, ownership of a fair amount of open space, there are some that have practically none, and nobody has enough if you take it all together. And in particular, Applewood does not have enough in order to do the kinds of things they would like to do. So it was a situation that was created because nobody, none of them were minding, or their land use lawyers, or whoever were minding the store, and they didn't come ask us. We have been working with them, however, for a couple of years about this, in connection with Atkins Corner Village Center Planning, and the general intent is to reduce the requirement, because it's a village center, for open space. That does not mean that any of the existing open space will change use, that would remain as-is. What would happen is, they would either become complying, or they would be, they would become more complying than they are now. They're non-conforming as it is in terms of the amount of open space they're supposed to have. When they began, there really wasn't a requirement for open, a specific square footage requirement for open space. It was simply that there should be some under a special permit, but the bylaw changed, this is a project that's been going on long enough, that the bylaw changed out from under them, they came into non-compliance after shuffling of ownership. Chris can probably describe it with greater accuracy, since she's been working with them.
Well, just one instance I can think of is the fact that Applewood itself is a multi, multifamily dwelling, and there was no requirement in the PURD for lot area related to number of units for multifamily dwellings when this was established, and now there is a requirement for lot area for each dwelling unit in a multifamily dwelling. So Applewood became non-compliant over time with regard to its density. And so one of the things that changing to RVC might do is, as Jonathan said, make it less non-conforming. I don't think it's going to bring it into conformance because it's so far out of conformance.
They also generously, but perhaps foolishly, sold the town the hill behind them as a conservation area, partly to protect themselves, to keep land always undeveloped, but in the process, they gave up their ownership, what had been fairly substantial open space attached to their project, and they can't use the town's land for that purpose.
So does, do the conditions of any of their special permits specify a square footage amount? It doesn't?
Not for Applewood, it doesn't, no, because the PURD actually has different density requirements than the bylaw as a whole, and so if you take this whole development, you know, as a whole, you get different calculations than you do if you take it the way it's currently broken down, and as Jonathan said, it's currently broken down into these smaller parcels, each of which, some of which are conforming to their density requirements and some aren't, so it's kind of a big mishmash right now. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
So like, like many, like all significant zoning changes, there will need to be follow-ups to this. If this is adopted, there will need to be over a period of years, and one of those will be the Hampshire Village group of folks figuring out exactly what they need, at least under the existing zoning, to address their open space needs, and then we'll probably have some subsequent rezonings to adjust things so that they come into conformance.
Chris?
If you're interested, I could provide you with copies of the old special permits for that development, if that would, you know, be of interest to you.
Yeah, I'll provision that. If it's, don't run off copies or anything, if it's available.
I could scan them and send them to you.
Okay, yeah.
What kind of people are those who ask to have special permit conditions sent to them? Long-suffering people, generous people.
And finally, the EDF overlay, also in Atkins Corners. I just want to understand, what happens is that it effectively changes the setback. Right now, that proposed ED zone is RO, so the setback is twenty-five feet. If we make it ED, without, without the EDF overlay, there are no setback requirements?
No, without the EDF overlay, the existing language of the educational district rules, and that establishes a fifty-foot setback from the existing, not setback, fifty-foot distance from the boundary of the, it's abutting any other district, and within that fifty feet, they would have to abide by whatever the dimensional requirements, specifically the setback side rear yards and heights of the adjacent district. So instead of just doing it by default that way, this is sort of a conscious attempt to say, within that first fifty feet, the form-based requirements, rather than just these simple dimensional rules, would apply. And it's really an attempt to make sure that you end up on both sides of the street, where you have a village center on one side, and what's essentially a campus on the other, that there's consistency on both sides of the street. It's not odd things happening on one side of the street that have no relationship to the other.
But if Hampshire College, or whoever they sell that land to, wanted to avoid that, they could, they could just build at fifty-one feet?
Yeah, yes. They could do that now, under the existing ED district. This is the area on the map as shown, that Hampshire College intends to complete their cultural village. Right now, they've got it flanked, they have the Eric Carle Museum, and the Itish Book Center, and they intend to put uses in between, so that they have one continuous flow of cultural facilities.
But it's, if the Eric Carle Museum, the setback is like a hundred and fifty feet.
It's a hundred and sixty-three feet.
So if they wanted to make a flow, it's going to be more than fifty feet back, probably.
Yeah.
So it's not, so I feel like it's not really going to be, they're not really going to be interacting with the village center.
This would have less to do, well, it depends on what they intend, but this would have less to do with buildings than it would to do with the treatment of the landscaping and the ways in which ensuring that a pedestrian connection is continuous along that side as it develops, that curb cuts and crosswalks and so forth are responding to what's across the street, much of which would be the result of the ordinary permitting process, this simply says so upfront. But it's not out of question that somebody that in the future might propose a, you know, fine art center or something that was on the street effectively, and was deliberately responding to what was across the street. And in those instances, you'd want to have the fundamental rules about how that happens be the same.
Okay, thanks.
Edith? Do you have anything, Richard?
Just another comment that I wish there had been more designation of opportunities for public transportation. I looked at these graphic depictions of street types, and I guess I don't see any reason why some set-asides for public transport couldn't have been inserted in them. Pedestrian and bicycle options are good and should be supported. But we're developing a plan for North Amherst especially, that as we embark on our town transportation plan, we're already blocked out of options in that plan because of what's being developed in the planning for North Amherst. So I don't know, is it too late to do that?
I don't think that what's proposed as it stands, although it probably could be expanded somewhat, precludes that. In fact, I think one of the initial statements here under, where is it? "Street networks and connectivity should achieve the following transportation objectives. Number one, ability to accommodate existing or anticipated public transit improvements and facilities such as bus stops." I think that this is not a specific, or these street types are not specific plans for the existing streets in North Amherst. Those plans will be developed subsequently, and we'll be able to address those questions. What these are saying is, when, when developed, they should have these as the minimum characteristics for these different street types in different areas.
Yeah, I hear that, and actually you've said that before, Jonathan, on options being available to accommodate those needs. But when we get so far as to present pictures of what these street types are going to look like, and for example, 1623 on page four says, "Additional street types are not permitted except where a special circumstance may warrant an additional street type design." I suppose you could fit that in, you know, what I'm talking about, into that special circumstance. But all of, all of the options are making it seem like that's a special consideration for the future, whereas what I've been advocating since the beginning has been including it as one of the present options for the, as we develop these plans.
Chris, I'm sorry.
I remember Steve Cecil saying something early on in this process, that he felt that this town and this type of environment was not conducive to a light rail type of development, that he felt that rubber-tired public transportation, whether it's, you know, run by electricity or, you know, it's a designated lane or whatever, was more in keeping with our town and our region. So that may be a discussion that you all want to have with him tonight, because I think he's, you know, he is not including what Richard is asking for, for a reason.
Well, if I can clarify, I'm not asking for light rail now. And I do agree that rubber tire dedicated lanes are probably the most likely option for the near future. But even in these scenarios that are presented, there's no designated set aside for that. Actually, that's more of what I'm talking about, a designated set aside for a commuter bus lane using smaller commuter-type buses. If that eventually turns into light rail somewhere down the line, that's great. But whatever the public transportation options are, even if it's some sort of limousine service that gets a special license from the town to use a special dedicated lane, like for example, the limousine services at Bradley Airport have to get a license from the State Department of Transportation in Connecticut. That's a far, far out example, but there's, there's just no option there. The only options that are presented as viable for the existing plans are vehicular traffic. There's language about, sure, well, if you want to do this in the future, then we can maybe consider it as, as an option, a special circumstance. I'm advocating to have it included now.
I think that would be a reasonably easy graphic change, for instance, in the illustration of commercial slash civic street type on the left-hand side or the right-hand side, for that matter. You could have language or something that indicates the potential for a parking lane, for either of those parking lanes to be dedicated transit lanes with the presumption that on that side of the street, wherever it is, the parking will be off-street rather than on-street. Or, as you say, there are, there are amalgams here. It could be a, you know, partially dedicated lane, and most of the time it's being used for, for transit, but sometimes in selected areas, cars can pull into the curb for a quick purpose here and there. If it's rubber tire transit, they can go around, and the dedicated lane question becomes one of enforcement, as it would be anyway.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with something like that. Do I have to repeat that comment tonight as a public meeting, or saying it now is that's not sufficient?
Well, I'm, we're taking notes, and I'll certainly let them know about it.
But it would be good for Steve to hear it, I think.
I think so, yeah.
So if I could follow up on that, because I've had some questions about the, the street types also, and it's not exactly the same issue that Richard's talking about, but they do interact. And so I guess my question is mostly the extent to which the diagrams that are presented here are prescriptive. In other words, they, they set out actual requirements that you need to follow, or are they just intended as illustrations that, that look nice? And so if we start putting things on these diagrams, and my understanding is that they're intended to be prescriptive. In other words, if it says that your setback is such and such, then, then you actually have to do that. And if it says that the trees are planted and aligned in a certain way, then you actually have to do that also. So I wonder a little bit about if we start putting things in these diagrams, are we actually requiring them on these specific street types? And if, the distinction between a requirement and a recommendation, particularly when it relates to illustration and graphic figures, which are inherently vaguer than written language? And so that's been, been a question of mine in, in all the discussions about the street types and building types in particular. And I guess I don't expect you guys to have ready answers to that necessarily, but that might be a, something more to discuss with Steve.
I think that would be very useful to discuss with Steve, specifically for the purpose of determining where that line is between prescription and it might look like this. I think that's a very important question I have answered.
I had a couple other comments. Going back to, we touched earlier on page 35, 35 of the main section, on the section having to do with pervious parking materials. We just talked about the acronym there. But we did have a more substantive discussion of that at our last meeting, and it doesn't look like any changes have been made to that section based on our conversation last time. So last time, I objected to, and I think others did as well, the notion that pervious paving material is treated sort of as a special case or as an exception, that can only be used in supplemental areas, and that you need to get a special permit in order to use permeable paving. And that language appears to me to be the same, and I'm not sure if you just didn't get a chance to look at that, or if that represents some sort of a policy decision on their side, that they think that this is the way that it should be. But I'll, I'll reiterate my viewpoint, that I don't think that that's the way that we should be doing it. Sorry, it's on page 35.
I see the, the pervious parking material.
Yep.
Also a typo in that paragraph.
Yeah, the typo didn't get fixed.
Yeah, the previous versus pervious.
Yes, I think it should be encouraged rather, yes.
Than just allow.
Yeah, I think we need to ask that question.
Okay. And the one other point I had, had to do with the use chart toward the back, I'm not sure which appendix that is. I'm not sure if I can even find it at this point. So in the use chart, there's quite a few additions to the standards and conditions having to do with the village centers, either individually or taken together. And I guess I just wanted to express a general concern about calling out special case situations for the, for specific districts or parts of districts in the standards and conditions. I'm referring, so just to take one particular example, on page six, under 3.336, which is medical or residential institutions, which the first subsection of that is for-profit hospital, sanitarium, nursing, rest or convalescent home, living care community, or other medical residential facility. And then there's a call-out underneath there in the standards and conditions that say, that says, "In the two village centers, for-profit hospitals and sanitariums are not permitted." So we've got the situation where we're saying yes by special permit to that category generally, but for some subset of that category, in these two zoning districts, you're saying no to some of it, but yes via special permit to the rest of it. And I just wonder whether it makes sense to go to that level of detail to say that, okay, it's all right to have a living care community or convalescent home by special permit, but under no circumstances could you have a for-profit hospital or sanitarium? Like, I guess I just don't see the necessity to, to go into that much detail there.
Whatever the necessity or lack of it, and we should have that conversation with them, that's probably not the way you would do it. If you, if you really seriously want to treat those uses under that general category different from the other uses, you should break them out into separate categories and regulate them separately.
Right, so the two questions there, do you need to do that? And if you do really think that they should be treated separately, should, should it be done that way, or should it be done as you just described with a separate use category?
I will say that, well, my answer stands on this one, but I will say that generally, if you look through the standards and conditions, it's not an unusual thing in our existing bylaw, and to a substantial extent, they're following the pattern they saw.
Yep. Except it is quite, that there are a lot of them, and it's quite a bit more specific, and it's talking about specific parts of zoning districts, like a couple pages earlier, on page two, under townhouses, 3.322. And there are existing standards and conditions for that, but we're adding a new one that says, "In the North Amherst Village Center," just that one, "townhouses are not permitted on the portion of a lot fronting on Sunderland Road, on a particular road, to a depth of 100 feet." So on a particular portion of a lot on a particular road.
That was very much, that specific attempt at regulation was very much something that came out of the public process, and that I think even the subcommittee was aware of at the time, that there was an intent to have within a larger zone in association with a specific street, subzones. And, and the evolution of this was, there was an attempt to look at overlay districts, and, and that ended up with, with a plate of spaghetti. There were just simply too many different variations. So they're instead using this method, and it's, I would run it by town council, I think it's a little clunky, but it, it works. And it's something that wasn't intent. It was not a, just out of the blue occurred to them, something that came out of the public process.
Yeah, so I understand some particular things, like townhouses, but like, not allowing hospitals, but allowing nursing homes, doesn't seem to me to be anything that I recall seeing during the public process.
And I think they should be asked that question. I think it probably has to do with the intensity of the use, the fact that you have emergency vehicles coming and going much more often with a hospital than you do with a nursing home and so forth. It has to do with the impact on the, on that particular setting. But as noted, there's a, there's a different way to do that if you want to do it.
All right. Anybody have any comments or feedback for us? We do have a limited amount of time here, and the planning board is having a meeting with, meeting on this in another half an hour, which will have Steve Cecil from the Cecil Group here. As you've probably heard, we all have questions for him too. So if you have a pressing issue that you want to bring to the subcommittee, this would be the time for it. If you're going to stick around and go to the planning board meeting at seven o'clock, you'll also have the opportunity to learn about and talk with us and with Steve Cecil from the Cecil Group at that point also. So I saw Richard's hand there first.
Yeah, I have an administrative question. Maybe I missed the reference to it, but just before attachment, gee, I have a sheet that is a notice of extension of contract regarding the Amherst.
That's a mistake.
Oh, okay. Other things got caught in the copying.
We all use the same copiers, so we often interleave our work.
Just wondering if it was tied in there.
And if I could ask you to approach the mic at the front, because they can't hear you on TV unless you speak into the mic, and introduce yourself, please.
I am coming back at seven, so if I need to ask these questions, that's fine. My name's Valerie Cooley, most of you know that by now. And, and I'm just repeating questions, frankly, that I've asked before, but I don't feel like I've gotten a completely clear answer on. So again, if you want me to come back at seven, that's fine, but I'm still trying to figure out the relationship between an overlay district and another district. My house right now is one of the houses that is proposed to be zoned in the Village Form Residence Overlay District, Figure 1A. And I don't know if that means it's a part of the North Amherst Village Center and this new zoning, or if it's just this new zoning, or if it's still RN and this new overlay zoning.
John? It's still RN, that's the fundamental zoning, that's not changing.
Okay.
It's having an overlay put on it such that there are additional rules about the form of new development in that area.
Right. Okay, well then, I guess partly why I'm confused, and I don't...
It's not North, it's not the NAVC district. It's distinct from, it's not.
Okay. And yet, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring this sheet up, one of the tables that talked about this RVF requirements talked about masses of buildings. So it seems like it's, that district is increasing the possibility of residential density, and yet that's not sort of clearly spelled out anywhere. And I'm, I'm not clear on what that density is. I appreciate the attempts to keep that street looking pretty, looking residential, but as a local resident who actually lives there, right, because some, a lot of those are rentals, and I know a lot of the people who own those properties have been involved in this process, but as somebody who lives there, not only concerned about appearance, but I'm concerned about traffic, congestion, noise, all of those kinds of things, and obviously density and how many people live there is a part of that. So that's a little confusing to me. Maybe that just needs to be spelled out in that table better, but it did seem like, even though it's still RN, because it's in this overlay district, the density is going to increase. So that, that's one issue. Oh, thank you. It is page 11, in the table that says Village Residential Building, and there's a check in the RVF column. So that's why I'm assuming that this is related to a description of buildings in that district. And it says, "This building and site tape is intended to accommodate several masses which resemble a series of connected or detached farmhouse buildings that contain multiple dwellings." Right, right now, those are individual homes, they're rented. Some of them are rented and some of them are personal. So I just want clarity on that, because it sure sounds like there can be a large increase in density, which RN would not allow, so. And again, you don't have to address that right now, maybe that's going to be addressed tonight. I've asked that question before, and I haven't gotten a clear answer. And the last one is simply how and why you picked the particular dotted red line that you did for this residential overlay district. You know, the shape there is interesting, so it's obviously not based on sort of simple ease or something like that. So I don't know, I don't know if the answer is simply from the public process, but I know for the majority of those of us who live along that street, I don't know if that's what we would have picked.
So I do want to emphasize the fact that we have not yet picked these boundaries at all. So what we're looking at is a proposal to us from the consultant.
From the Cecil Group.
Which is in fact based on input from everybody who participated in the process, and obviously not everybody has their interests aligned, people have competing interests. So it represents their view of a way of melding together.
Okay, so I should ask them that question.
Well, no, I mean, ultimately, we are going to be the ones who are responsible for it, but my point is just that, that those boundaries have not yet been finalized, and certainly we're aware that, that there is a fair amount of disagreement out there in terms of where the boundaries actually should be, and that's something that we will have to ultimately decide. So what we're looking at is, is the consultant's view, which again does represent the, the public process that went on. But they're giving it out to us, and we will ultimately...
I have made this point before, that that public process has had differential access for, for people. That's pretty clear.
I'm not sure what you mean.
There have been more meetings, okay, the, the owner of the property right north of Mill River, as well as Cinda, who I have to say, Cinda Cowles has been very open and honest with local... honest with local residents, and engaged us and, and asked for our input. And yet, I, I know that they have had more meetings with the Cecil Group and more communication with them. I mean, Cinda has told me that herself, she's, as I say, I appreciate very forthright and open, than, than any of the residents have had opportunity to have. Right, and in part, that's time, resources, that's our own inability to get to every single meeting, I appreciate that, that I've not been at every single meeting, I've tried to get to as many as I can. I don't have resources, I don't have, you know, staff that understands this, it's going to take me hours to try, I mean, more than hours to try to understand that, that thing. So it's just concerning, that's all. And, and I'm, you know, that's not your fault, you, we hired these people to, to do that job.
Chris, did you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to address Ms. Cooley's concern about density and use, and I think the density and use would be controlled by the use chart and the dimensional requirements chart, and the fact that a certain type of building is allowed in a certain district doesn't necessarily mean that a use that would allow, you know, many, many, many units to be in that zone would be allowed. So you have to go back to the use chart and see what's allowed in RN, and then go to the dense, uh, dimensional regulations chart and see how many units would be allowed in RN for a certain lot area.
Okay, so I guess that's just what's a little bit-
Sort of a lot of things-
Because, yeah, I did, because when I looked at, oh, I don't have this either, but obviously, an RN requires more square footage, right?
Per unit.
For additional family units versus, see, that's where this new zoning, RVF wasn't on there. So I don't know how much square, you know, if you, if you go by RN, great, but-
You're going by RN.
So the, the overlay doesn't change the dimensional regulations, right?
It does not change. What it does, what you, what you were looking at was the chart of building types, not which building types were allowed in which zoning, not which uses are being allowed in which zoning districts. What it's saying is that within the RVF overlay district, a village residential building is permitted.
Right.
But that building has to be attached to a land use, and that land use has to be permitted in the underlying RN district.
Okay, so that was the part that was just a little confusing to me, because the description of the type makes it sound like, so.
Chris?
I just wanted to point out that the dimensional regulation chart doesn't have the overlay district in it.
Yeah.
So the underlying dimensional requirements for the RN district will remain in effect.
Okay, and so the proposal on this, then, is keeping these properties the same current RN zoning that they are. So the only ones that are changing are the ones further down Monarchie Road, in this proposal. I understand, I understand that you're not making this proposal, that this is from the Cecil Group, but their proposal is only that the ones further down Monarchie Road closer to, and then the Coles Building property right on the corner.
Yes, yes, but, as I believe you understand, the, the area with the dotted border around it, that the overlay district, that, that does have some impact also, so there are changes based on that overlay district.
See, this is where I'm, like, I'm hearing different things.
Form regulations-
Form regulations, I understand that, what it needs to look like, I understand the purpose of that.
Let me give you an example that may illustrate how some of this all connects. We were just talking about standards and conditions for medical or residential institutions, which might, for instance, including a, a living care community, and there had been some discussion of, what do we do if somebody wants to propose a living care community on the west side of Monarchie Road? What the effect of that would be is that if you're going to do that under a special permit in the RN district, which is what the regulation would be from the Zoning Board of Appeals, that building, that series of buildings would have to be consistent with the village residential building requirements-
Right.
The form requirements in, in the new zoning. It, it doesn't have any more units than it would under a plain RN district, but it, the form of it will have to be different.
Okay. And so that's a little surprising to me, their proposal is even the north side of Coles Road remains RN?
Yes.
And, and in case it's not clear from looking at the use chart, which is big and complicated, the, the, the more intense residential uses, like townhouses and apartments, are not allowed at all in RN.
Right.
You can't have those, and that, that wouldn't change under this, so that would continue to be the case. So regardless of the form of the building, you couldn't have something that was for all intents and purposes, an apartment building or a, a townhouse.
So like, these village residential buildings, really, that description of masses of, several masses, which is a little bit terrifying, right, to think about, masses of buildings across the street, no matter how pretty they are. Even though it says that could be in RVF, it, it really can't if the RVF right now is still RN.
What it says is, if you can find a use, like a living care community, that's big enough to have that form, and that's permitted in the RN district, then you have to have this form as opposed to some other form. And the village sent residential building is also permitted in the NAVC district, where it would make a great deal more sense in terms of the uses that it would represent.
Okay.
One last point on that, because you, you mentioned the word a couple times, is, is mass sounds like a, a big scary word, a lot, right? But that, that's actually sort of a term of art, that, that's referring kind of to the shape and orientation and building envelope, and not to necessarily to large amounts, you talk about masses or something.
I told you, I'm, I'm, you know, this is a steep learning curve.
For, for all of us.
We try to avoid elephantine zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, let's wrap up the discussion, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I, I missed you.
Laura Fitch, Public Hill Road. Page nineteen, there's another diagram of that sort of big house, little house, back house barn that's so beloved in North Amherst, and it falls under additional development standards for North Amherst Village Center. So now it's not just in that overlay, but in the, and it show, it shows something being this long skinny building mass perpendicular to the road, and I just wanted to point out that maybe in some places, that just isn't practical, what, if there's topography changes, which there are some between, on some of the properties that are in the North Amherst Village Center. So it looks like it's a requirement, and I just wonder if it should rather be highly recommended or something.
Well, it's a requirement, but it also includes language that shall follow a similar composition. If the land dictates that you can't run a building straight back without wrapping it down the slope, or doing something odd with it, then whatever's proposed before the permit granting body, it would be their job to decide whether or not what was being proposed was consistent with the, with the form regulations. Say, you know, the distinct building masses may be either connected or independent.
Okay.
There's enough flow in the language to allow for variation for site conditions.
I already mentioned to you a typo on page thirty-three, where it says fifty percent and twenty-five percent for a parking reduction.
Yes, you did, thank you.
And another question I had on, what page is this? Page forty, under the Sustainable Design and Development Standards. My question is really about the word shall. Doesn't that mean a requirement?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Page forty, towards the bottom, it says sustainable design and development standards, development within the FBD districts, what's that?
Form-based district.
Right, right. Shall incorporate sustainable and best management practices into building site infrastructure development. I wholeheartedly support sustainable design, that's the focus of my own work, but when it says shall, and then lists a whole bunch of methods, some of which may not work for a particular site, I would rather, say, a certain percentage of these, or that they're encouraged, or that you're going to lead, use lead building standards or something, where they have checklists, where you have to, you know, gain certain points for something.
So-
So it's not clear to me, if shall means you have to do all these things.
So, so my interpretation of that, and I think it's supported by the language, is that, that the header under sixteen eighty-seven says that you shall incorporate sustainable and best practices management, and then the best management practices, and then the individual items under there. I don't believe that that's meant to be an exhaustive list of, you have to do every one of those things, and that's supported by the fact that they all, or most of them anyway, include the word should in the individual line items. So it says, for the first one, low-impact development, best management practices should be used for all driveways. The next one, for building solar orientation and design, says the massing of all buildings should be considerate of solar access, and, and so on. So, so I think that's meant to be, to, to say that you shall be doing at least some of this, or as much of this as you can, but-
So it seems like a sort of a hard thing to enforce, but I guess that's sort of, I don't know if that's worth pointing out, but it, it is confusing to have shall in the first.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, and we are wrestling with that in other areas too, in terms of things that are required versus encouraged, but, but I, I do think that that one is, is not meant to be interpreted as requiring every single one of those things to take place.
And then I didn't really understand the Table Three Dimensional Regulations clarification that was made earlier about minimum lot coverage, I mean, maximum lot coverage of ninety-five percent. Does that have some conflict or something with open space requirement, or I, I didn't quite catch that?
We, we think that one of the members raised the question, that this appears to be a conflict, and initially, I would say it does, that we need to have a, a broader numerical range there to reflect the open space requirements under footnote O.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, if those are the only ones we can find, I'll be shocked, I mean, this is going to be a-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have several comments, I'm not going to make them now, but I wondered if, are we planning to meet next week?
Are we planning to meet next week? That brings us to the subject of next meetings.
Yes, it does.
Whereby we skip over everything else on our agenda. Are we planning on meeting next week? So our next regularly scheduled meeting would be two weeks from today, on September We have a lot to do, and I'm sure that we could find enough to do next week. What are you guys feeling, availability on meeting next Wednesday?
I can make it. Fourteenth? I'm probably not available the twenty-first, fourteenth's probably possible.
I'm available.
Okay, does that work for you guys?
Sure.
So then our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September fourteenth, at five PM, almost certainly in this room, and we will also meet on the twenty-first.
We might want to, just for the purposes of helping to clarify the, the agenda, agree that we're going to delve into some of the specifics on this, particularly, I would, I would say, the beginnings of conversations about the zoning district boundaries.
Yes.
So that people have an opportunity to, to come to, to speak to that.
Yep.
Okay. That will be the focus for next week?
Next week, yes.
Sorry, I missed that. Jeff was saying something.
Jonathan was suggesting that the, the next week's meeting on the fourteenth be dedicated to consideration of specific details of these proposals, and in particular, looking at the boundary issues, which we haven't looked at in any depth yet. All right, unless anyone has anything else, we are adjourned at six forty-five or so.